Good evenings. It's five thirty, so I'm gonna call the meeting of the board's election for order on May tenth, two thousand twenty-three. And I would ask that anyone is going to speak, would you come to the front of the room and use one of the mics at the front? The first item on our agenda is the New London Water Precinct Review of Water Capacity and Other Issues. The Water Precinct, maybe do you want what?
London Springfield.
Oh, excuse me, London Springfield Water Precinct. And we have three commissioners here, John McCann, Rick Cross, and Ken James.
Ken James, I'm chairman this year, some other years. This happens, that's what we have right now. Preface everything, we sat down, Bill Helm, Tim Holquist, Adam Ricker, we're at a precinct meeting three, four weeks ago, something like that. And we had some conversations regarding where we were up to, what we were looking at, and what impact these developments are having on precinct capacity. We had conversation, and at the end of the discussion, suggested maybe we should come to the slide. So that's where we are right now. And I'm open to however you want me to do this. You want me to talk a little bit about what I spoke about at that meeting, I could do that, or I could answer questions. I think it's no difference to me.
Well, Ken, I think you need to address the issue about capacity, because it seems that a lot of residents are aware of the fact that maybe there not enough capacity for new projects, or even the people who are certainly within the precinct but not using it.
Okay, so that part's not true.
Okay.
The last part's not true. Precinct, I'll just do a little historical background on the question. So the precinct from nineteen twenty-five up until nineteen ninety-five was serviced by Morgan Pond. Typical New England water system, came out of the woods, treated with a little bit of chlorine, a little bit of caustic, and off into the communities it went. And it was a very efficient system, no pumping involved, all gravity fee, served as well for many years. And in the early nineties, the state of New Hampshire adopted the Safe Drinking Water Act from the federal government. And with that, we had to make some changes. And one of those changes was that Morgan Pond was not going to satisfy the needs of the precinct from the quality of the water and also the quantity. And we looked at what were the viable options that we have available to us at that time. After, like any other municipal organization, multiple studies, more than you want to spend money on at any given ten-year period. And Colby Point was identified as an aquifer. It was limited, but had good quality water supposedly, and sufficient quantity of it. Morgan Pond was looked at at treating it with slow sea infiltration and then possible chemical augmentation after that. And the state wouldn't bite on that, because they didn't feel there was enough capacity from the watershed at Morgan Pond. So that was kind of pushed aside. And the other option was looking at possibly putting in a complete treatment, excuse me, chemical augmentation treatment plant for Little Sonopie, or slow sea infiltration unit for Little Sonopie, and using water out of Little Sonopie. That had some downsides to it, we didn't have any land. The spare garage we have now is on townland, so we barely build a garage, don't find a chemical treatment plant. And Colby Point had a lot of positives. Very limited treatment of the water and good proximity to the precinct. Even though the pump station and the wells are not in the precinct, they're just on the the hard part about getting that to go, and it took a decade of discussion, was getting the access over Cleveland property of Colby. And after some time, Jim and Hillary were kind enough to have more conversation with us about possibly doing that, and putting a well field out there. And so, there's an awful lot that went into that, and the domain proceedings, which never fun. And they were handled on an amicable basis, so that there was not a lot of infighting between parties. And we were able to secure a ninety-nine-year lease on Colby Point. Still an awful lot of public opposition to it, because of the proximity of the lake, and whether or not you potentially put restrictions on the lake, could it inhibit the use of the lake, navigation of the lake, quality of the lake. And I mean, Steve remembers all that, because Little Somebody Protect Association is on the other side of the fence. Certainly, the business I'm in, I don't want to see the lake restricted. I need that. So, we were able to work something out, and we've got some provisions in the lease that if there are issues, we have to either fix it or vacate it. So that was the best option at the time for the precinct and for the future thirty-year estimated lifespan of those wells. What engineering firm can look out the past thirty years? We couldn't look out ten years, we talked with the, we talked with Ozzy's side, which was just getting its feet on the ground, talking with builders, what's gonna be the build-out, how much land's gonna be protected, where are we going with this stuff? And that was the option that the state would give us approval to borrow money from. And we went ahead, and we were able to get it. I don't know if Steve remembers how close the vote was, but
It wasn't a lot.
Pretty tight. And we've been using Colby Point. At the time, the agreement with the Cleveland's was that we needed to develop that well field to its maximum capacity. We did that, did all the five-day company tests that we had to, figured out how much the capacity was on it, which at the time, if I remember correctly, it was around seven hundred fifty thousand gallons of water per day. And that needs to be throttled back a little bit, can't pump at that level and not, and you'd expect a short-circuit system if you went too high. So it was throttled back to what the hydrogeologists at the wealth group told us it needed to be at. And we've run at that level since nineteen ninety-five, when we came online. The the well field over time has lost some of its efficiency. Like everything else, it's gotten older, and its ability to draw water from the aquifer is inhibited by some of the fines that go into that whole process. The, Slackman heard this, and when it came to that meeting, things positive happened in town, depending on how you look at it. The little school's gone, that's ten, twelve thousand gallons of water a day. Sewer department was incorporated into town public works. And I believe the sewer commission was abandoned, and there's no sewer commission anymore. Rates changed dramatically, and suddenly, the two major users in town, the college and the hospital, were now in water conservation. So low flow everything throughout their entire processes, and because they were seeing it on the sewer. And they needed to cut the coal and sand. So all that helped the precinct. And it's been limited, I'd say, over the last, I think it fell out in this, over the last ten to twelve years, we've had roughly one and a half new construction customers into the precinct every year. So that's the level that we look at, and when we say, where is this thing going, and what, where are we going down the road? One of the issues you find is that irrigation, and when I say irrigation, we've studied it, whether it's, is it commercial or is it residential? It's almost ninety percent residential irrigation that has a major impact on the amount of water that's pumped any given day. We are limited to, you know, one million gallon storage tank, one mile up in the woods, up past Little Sonopie, up behind Twenty-one Building, there's a half a million gallon storage tank up here, beyond the college, in the field of the viewing, and we have a pump station there with fire pumps. When we pump twenty-four hours a day, we can't fill the tank in the woods, that's wrong. And that's what the state looks at, as your max flow. And when your max flow and your max usage are the same, or one is higher, a little bit higher, the max usage is a little higher than the max flow, the state frowns them. And so a project like the housing that's going on at Presetti property, or the hospital project, would be, the two of those together would be over fifteen percent of the water we use any given day. Fifteen percent increase over what we use now. We are required to provide to the state DES, any main that comes into the precinct that's over a thousand feet long, we've actually had them reviewed over five hundred feet, along with capacity levels, usage levels, and they do a full review on it. What came back from them, and basically, was the same as what we got from our engineers, is that you're too close to your max flow to be able to absorb this type of water. We will not let you do that. And certainly, the people that regulate us, we're not gonna sit back and say, I'm not sure you know what you're talking about. We're just gonna go ahead and do anything. That makes no sense, certainly, those were the questions. And so, what came back on the Presetti property, we forwarded to continuum, and said, we're not gonna be able to take on these projects. And being said, we are in the process of evaluating what options we may have, we started that two and a half years ago, and looking for either, maybe trying to enhance Colby Point, is that an option? I don't know, we'll have to have somebody look at it, technology has changed. Is there some opportunity to maybe have a supplemental well somewhere? High-volume, high-production well, that doesn't need tons of treatment, that could be introduced into the system? I don't know, they're looking at that too. I don't know if there are other sources of water. I know the answer to it, I know there are other sources of water, but it's so far away. Initially, they don't make sense. London, unfortunately, on top of the hill, everything below it would require pumping to come back up. Those costs are a lot of money. And just for everybody's understanding, it's a water precinct with a little over six hundred thousand dollars budget. So, it's not like we burn through millions of dollars every year and can absorb another four or five million dollars in operating costs, or whatever it may be. There's not easy. So, that being said, we're gonna wait, see what comes back from the engineers who are looking at it. I, I, I said it at the precinct, and I want everybody to come away with that. I don't know that there's a silver bullet to say, okay, here's an infinite amount of water, go do whatever you want to do, anywhere in New London, Springfield, in the precinct, and have it, makes sense. To say that, and have you go away thinking that, would not be fair. And I said that to Joe when he was at the, came to the last meeting, it's a it's a tough one, there's no question about it. And when you think of the towns that have infinite amount of water, for example, Sonopie, they got a big pipe that goes into the lake, the lake is huge, and they treat that. We don't have any land next to the lake, I don't know anybody in New London that would give us land to put a treatment plan on, but there might be somebody out there, I don't know. We're gonna look at it from a realistic standpoint, and see what we can do. But some things might not be doable. They may be, there may be an answer, and until we hear from the professionals that you hire and look at this stuff, deal with it every day, that's where we're gonna go with it. So, right now, we'll kind of just wait, see if we can get the stuff back from the engineers, and see what recommendations they may have. I'm willing to answer questions from anybody, I've been around the precinct for a long time. Yeah, so, that's true, that's a good point, the Main Street project, somebody's probably seen that in the paper. We embarked on that, we've got a superintendent that's been there quite a while. Main Street is one of the weakest links that we have in the system. Main transmission through the center of town, put in nineteen fifty, we've had well over fifteen water main breaks, and each one of them is more than jumping. The main break, the last one, we just had two days before Christmas up here, we were almost fourteen feet down in the Main Street's, been covered over the years, to cover this, put that in, fix that. And we had the opportunity, don't have a lot of debt right now, and thought it was a good time to step in and try to upgrade Main Street, while superintendent's around and knew a lot about it. That's a major project, probably a multi-phase project, I doubt it will happen one year. I don't know the numbers on that, rough estimates, two to four million, still a big chunk for somebody who has six hundred thousand dollars budget. And that's on our plate, and we're moving forward with that, we're not gonna stop that. It goes from Squires Lane to Home and's Corner, which is down next to Spring Beach, it's just a little over a mile line.
Any idea of the length of that?
Well, I don't have the engineering back, so they, we talked to them, I just heard this afternoon, spoke to them today, and said, oh, we're gonna start getting going on that. I'm hoping that by this fall, we have the engineering back, so that we can get some rough numbers on what the engineers would estimate. And then, we're gonna make the decision whether we want to put the RPL next year or not. I would like to get started next summer, right? We don't want to do it in the middle of the summer, we'd like to do it either early spring, or the fall is actually the best time. But you got a lot of things going on, the state, that's more than a lot of things going on with the road, and they control the road, and we're gonna make a mess of their road. And it's, you can imagine, there's services and cross mains that lead Main Street everywhere. And all that has to be temporary water in the interim while you're digging up the road. So it's, and unless you've been in that road, no Bob hands. To see what's in there, it's just unbelievable, the old wooden water main is still there from nineteen twenty-five. There's wires all over the place, clay sewer lines, we hit four of them the night we were in up at the college. And some sandy didn't even go over there. So what's in the ground, we don't really know, and there's gonna be a lot of disturbance going through. And my guess is from the center line back to the sidewalk, will be, have to be fixed, you know, we'll go in the same, we're gonna try to go in the same trench, which is nice, because that has been excavated, and there's been material put in there that we can deal with. But we, we get into some of these things, you start digging, they've got ledge going back in on top of the wall. But, you know, I don't know if anybody's still alive to yell on that. So that, that's really where we are with it, I wish I had a great answer, don't have a great answer.
Well, I'm gonna open it up for questions from the board, Bill, do you have any questions, Ken?
Would you take what you just said, Ken, and translate it to what happens if a commercial land on a property owner there wants to do something now, or what if a resident along our road wants to do something now? But what?
For the residents, not the issue, I said, correct?
I'm just, I'm saying, I'm really throwing softball, clarify. What are you saying in terms of residents versus user?
Well, it depends what the commercial user is. If somebody's putting in an office that has one small commode, a bathroom in it, it's not gonna use an awful lot of water. But if he's putting in a commercial business with apartments out back, or apartments up above, or it is a complete, just living situation, that's where the water goes, it goes in the boat. So, we're gonna continue looking at each situation on an individual basis. And we don't feel we have problems absorbing the current rate of growth. I mean, there's not a ton of land still available in the precinct, precinct's relatively built up, built up. It's not, and I'm not pointing, the thing is, you all know that zoning has changed in New London, and that affects us. Okay, so the commercial zoning has changed, the density has changed. What that, you say it went back to what it used to be, that's fine, but what it used to be, we haven't been planning on for the last ten, twelve years. And when you introduce something like the Presetti property, that has sixty housing units in it, that's twenty-five years of growth for us, on what we've seen in the past.
But in the conversations you and I have had, you've said that an individual homeowner, for the normal house, and normal residence, shouldn't be concerned by all this.
No question.
Me.
After what you were talking about, about looking for the alternative sources, additional alternative sources, and you mentioned, I think you said you have engineers, and they're working on that now.
Yeah, I know what is our engineering firm, like, we, we got a warrant article that asked them to look at what our current sourcing was, was there any technology out there that could enhance that? Was, was, they were employing a hydrogeology firm to look at whether there were well potentials in the area, or maybe answer.
Do you have a timeline for that?
We're hoping for this fall, we're hoping for this fall.
Fall, for both engineering firm, alternative sources, and for the Main Street project?
Well, the Main Street project specs, I would expect we'll have that by this fall, because they've already done all the surveying, and they're just supposedly working all on paper, so that it makes sense. And the study information, I hope, in this fall. Yeah, it might be sooner, I don't know.
And then you feel like you have good communication if our planning committee of the new projects come in, and is there any criteria that you're using when, when somebody is putting in, like, likes to put in swimming pool or something like that?
Well, the swimming pool doesn't really affect us, because they, most of them would bring in part of the water, and fill it. Or, I mean, if you stick a gabber, it's a one shot, it's not, it's not a ton of water. The I think things have changed with respect to planning over the last decade now. And, you know, I guess I don't really want to get into that, I think that I look at it differently, I should have planned, I've been on that board for twenty-seven years. If I was looking at a project, and I wanted to know whether that project was viable based on the current infrastructure, those are the first questions I would ask. That's just my opinion. And I made those suggestions to people, you know, whatever, I don't have any problem dealing with whatever mechanism the town uses. But sometimes surprises are what people like, for surprises.
I think everybody hopes to be able to keep that communication open from there on.
Yep, Adam's been real good, really good, as far as keeping us in the loop, we had some conversations the last couple of years. You know, I mean, I indicated to him that I've been working relationship with Peter Stanley. Peter was a stickler, grumpy, and everybody, you know, he got the job done, and he made sure that things were aligned for getting things done, so. You know how to get a hold of me. Well, through Rob, through Rob, right?
So, Ken, I know we have a project off of Main Street with five units.
Yeah.
And there's been some issue about whether or not they can have water. No?
No issue.
Okay, they, they will be able to get?
No, I haven't seen an application yet. We have not seen a water application at that water precinct, and I paid my superintendent to drive one up there. So, when somebody says they don't have water, they need to come talk to people who buy the water, before we do it. Have we seen an application on that? Okay, you know, and I'm not pointing fingers, and Robbie has been over and above, and trying to get them to apply, think about what you're doing, think about how you're gonna service it, are you putting in fire protection, you gotta go across the street to get that, it's a lot involved in it. And so
Robbie stopped by there four times, asking him to bring in
and said, you ought to get this into the precinct. So, you know, you talked to Bill a little bit about rumors, and how rumors get started. You know, I, I don't have a sales mind to be running around selling water, I don't want to be selling water. So, it, it, we, we have, I think that's important to mention. Going in nineteen ninety-five, we knew the capacity of Colby Point, and we knew that it was a finite amount of water. We've done everything we can to conserve what we consider to be a valuable resource. And I said it to a bunch of people, I run into people on, whoopsie, John, he was running the restaurant. You know, how's everything out on Colby Point? Oh, things are going pretty well, how much more water can you get out of it? That's not the question, the question is, it, it's a resource, and I think people need to treat it that way. And we don't have an infinite amount of water. And if we did, we'd have jumped on that boat back in nineteen ninety-four, ninety-five, going in that direction, to get the most amount of water. And we were steered away from using Little Sonopie as a direct water source, which would have been even worse with wells on Colby Point, and would have probably had a lot more opposition. Beach, businesses on the lake that might not care for restrictions. I, I think that that's the thing, the misconception a lot of people have, is that it's taken for granted, that we have this, you know, we have this resource, we have a point, we have an aquifer that's there, we're in the aquifer, and we just open the valve a little bit, or we're gonna give a little water, and it doesn't work that way. So, I, I think people need to realize that, and you've been in a water precinct before, you and the other two people, nobody ever is involved, I said it, I did that thing to Jimmy at Town Meeting. You know, I hear from the people whose bill is too high, the people who have no water, those are the two people I hear from, only that we have to make. And so, anyway, those are a couple of things I just want.
Thank you. Does anyone in the public have any questions, or Ken? If you do, come up, please, and use, Will's gonna hand you a mic.
I'll stand here.
Yeah, and just state your name, please.
Yes, Ryan, thanks for a great presentation, great help. So my question has to do with a little background.
Yeah.
I'm not a, I guess, I'm a water guy. So basically, what I'm gathering from this, we have, we're tapping into an aquifer that's under Little Lake Sonopie.
Yes.
There's a drill, they drilled down to tap into that.
There are six gravel path wells.
What does that mean, gravel path?
So as opposed to a bedrock well, an artesian well, which most people would have in the periphery of the precinct, so the developments that are a private home on Pig Hill, would have to have a well, most people don't have dug wells today, they have wells drilled into bedrock, and they'll either private to get more water out of it. So a gravel path well is a well that is set into the media that's there, excavated inside the casing, and then on the outside of the casing, they put a constant dian, I'll just call it dian, the media around it. And those wells, so this will surprise a lot of people, the wells that are close to the lake, the ones up there, there are six wells, three on the upper spine, and three along the edge of the lake. These are thirty-two feet deep, these are sixty-two feet. Very shallow wells, and they drop, they're in, they're in the aquifer. And the aquifer, some of it is natural aquifer, and the state has agreed, there's no question, there is some residual recharge to the aquifer from the lake, just because of where it is. And, but there is not a direct influence to the wells from the lake, and that's why we're able to use the water directly out of the aquifer. We do water chlorination, we adjust sodium hydroxide, and we do add one more product that protects us from your pipes. I guess the easy way to say it, because a lot of leaching of lead and copper from years gone by, solid that was used, and that stuff gets into the water. When we put the water into the system, we don't get to give that to the state to test, we have to take it from the tap. So there's a lot of introduction of, excuse me, contaminants in people's homes.
So that aquifer, is that parched, I mean, is it under the whole town?
No, no, it's a limited aquifer, very limited to one, that's, if you look at the topography of Colby Point, it's got out almost at lake level, it's got a little incline, there's a spine, and you drop that down. There is nothing on either side of it, the aquifer is in the center of the spine.
So if the workforce housing people, if they want to drill the well, they wouldn't be drilling into the same aquifer?
They would probably be doing bedrock.
So a different type of wall?
Different type of wall, dislocated wall, well, yeah, it's a, the wall that goes into granite, and it's what most homeowners have. And then are not in the precinct.
So my last question is, you were talking about if you put a big pipe into Little Lake Sonopie, you have to have restrictions. But then I got confused, because you said in the big lake, the town of Sonopie, they just put a big pipe in, and I don't think there's any restrictions on that way.
Well, there's, there, I'm not sure if the swimming ordinance is still there, there wasn't, there wasn't no swim ordinance. Well, there's, there there, I'm not sure if the swimming ordinance is still there. There wasn't a, there wasn't no swim ordinance in Son of Be, however. They have a slow sand filtration unit now that they use. So I guess it it, an important thing to mention probably is. We're fortunate because we have Mother Nature's slow sand filtration, a natural state. So in Son of Be, they take and do quite the same thing. They take water, they have a large building, they have this media that they put in and they run water over the top of the media, runs down through the media that they have. Comes out the other end, clean water. That has what's called a travel time through that medium and a typical travel time is around four hours. So when they ran the test on Kobe Point, they determined that the water transmission would be drawn into the aquifer. It's over seventeen days. It's just an incredible amount of time. And. We could use. A pipe in Little, use Little Son of Be and have a slow sand filtration system. And then that water would need to be pumped down to the lake, then pumped back into the system. And probably some treatment that would have to go on, so some real estate involved, a lot of money.
So Ray, so Ray.
I just, just the last thing, the restrictions, this is one of the things we've asked them to do in the study, to find out if you do a draw from the lake. What are the potential restrictions on that water source? Are they recreational restrictions, navigational restrictions? Little Son of Be is a fairly shallow lake, keepers point's around forty feet. And uh, there's not a, not a lot there to play with, but it is a larger body of water than Morgan Pond. Morgan Pond is about fifty percent of the water that runs into Little Son of Be comes from the Morgan Pond watershed. Then there's infiltration of many, many different deeds that end up in Little Son of Be with the rest of them.
From the Morgan Pond, were you just pointing at the pavement or was your?
Well, Morgan Pond was part of it.
It's a part.
And there was a stub that went out into the lake. It goes out into about, I believe, ninety, about eight feet of water. And that stub is out about forty feet, comes down to a gate at the dam. And out of that gate is a stub, small little building there with a gate valve on it. And what they did was they built two reservoirs, roughly. Oh, one point five million gallons of storage where our current tank is now, which is about, as the co flies, a mile and a half from Morgan Pond. So the pipe that came out of the dam fed into a brook. Brook brought the water down to a settling basin. Settling basin took out turbidity and such, settled out some of the bad stuff, stuff that overflowed out went in to fill the reservoir. And those two reservoirs would be full topped off, just coming over the overflow early in the morning. And by afternoon, when everybody uses water all day long. They would start going back up again at night. So if somebody was up at the pond every day checking the gate, the problem is, I've seen Morgan Pond. Just in the last few years, you've seen Morgan Pond where you can almost sink top of it. So those drought years, that's not a viable source of water. Still water coming back in.
My last question, um, so the way I understand it, tell me if this is correct. There is a capacity issue. It's either in the pumping or the amount of water that's in that, in those wells. It's not like we have unlimited capacity. There is a capacity issue. Is it the pumping or is it the amount of water?
The amount of water that the aquifer gives. I said that earlier, it's seven hundred fifty thousand gallons a day. Is what that aquifer was, was Cleveland said, you're going in, go and watch, you're not coming back. So we went in, we did the five day pump that they pump twenty-four hours a day, five days. They can make a determination for what the capacity of the aquifer is. So we limited aquifer and we knew that in nineteen fifty-four. It was the best option.
Thank you.
Adam Ricker, our planning administrator, has a question.
Uh, I'm just curious, I know this is. On it that would solve any future issues, but when you said that the irrigation is the the issue on the sort of spike days. Um, I guess there's how many days in typical summer does that represent and sort of how many gallons on each one of those days? And and are there measures that we can take or that we give out building permits, we give out, you know, a flyer that talks about it or, you know, anything like that that. Um, that can help to sort of flatline those those spike days for the.
We just, yeah, we we discourage the irrigation. Um, but almost impossible to regulate. And the state frowns on us having to discourage the irrigation. In the past, and we've had a few years where we've had to do this, when we, when Robbie calls me in the morning at six o'clock and says, we didn't make any water last night in the tank, we're down another eighteen inches. We will put on a voluntary ban on watering, so you can only water at night, so seven at night, seven in the morning. That has solved the problem overnight. The problem is that that's not an answer. That's just a feel-good thing that we've done that. And if if you have a bad drought year where people are watering and they grab, you can. You can go see all the, no offense, see all the banks on Main Street. Once pouring rain out, they get sprinkler system on a meter, on a timer and then water. Makes no sense, but that's what they do. And it's it's hard to regulate that type of stuff without banning it out. And uh, that's, the horses are out of the pasture and I'm going to go close the door now. It's really hard to do that. So to answer your question, it it's on a, any given year, you could have that. It's typically in the middle of the summer when we have. So uh. Like in the last summer where it was dry and all of a sudden we got a bunch of rain, worked itself out, we we didn't have days that we didn't make enough water.
But um, and in in the last ten years, as the storms have become more intense, but then farther apart, has this become a bigger issue with irrigation or?
I I don't know if that's the issue. The issue is the years where we don't get rain for extended weeks to the time. Not amount of, uh, enough rainfall amounting, that's, that's been the issue. I don't know if I answered the question.
Thank you.
All right, Ken, um, I had one other question. Do all non-user taxpayers within the district, will they be guaranteed that they can access municipal water?
That's what they're proposing.
Okay, so it's a.
I'm not going to give you the answer. If if it's a residential unit and they come in and they want to put in water, more than likely, if they don't have water now. It's because they're on the periphery of the precinct, there's no water main, no one to them. Right? I got a son that does that. My son just built a home, he's on a well because it makes more sense than running the water up to his house. And there's a few of those in town, but I don't think there's a million lots in town. Now, that being said. Change the density in the zone to have multiple units on smaller lots. We're going to have trouble. I just know you are. We we, that's not what we're set up for you. And when we looked at this back in the nineties, we knew what the buildout was, the town potentially. And uh, I'm not going to say the precinct hasn't gotten lucky on the vessel land and and got very lucky on the bucket. All that land was in the precinct, so that's a blessing that. But what if Dore came in, want to do his eighty unit buildout down the back there? They never would have gotten it. Wouldn't have that kind of water. And you've got developments on the outside of the precinct, soap and shores across the town. They have their own well field, they treat it, and they've been like that since they put it in. At times, it's the nature of the beast. I'm fairly realistic about things I look at on a daily basis. So the the projects in town, the continuum project and the um, the crescent property project there. Those are going to require, it's better for them to have fire protection through the municipal system. And we have told them both that, you know, that that's certainly something that would have died. Uh, that doesn't, unless the whole place burns down tomorrow, it's not going to be a big draw on the system. And fire protection helps them not to have, they won't have to have cisterns and storage for that type of thing. And hydrants that fire department can latch on to. So my understanding is the percentage probably they're still going to put in water main that grids into the Fennwood project. And they'll have their stubs coming off that to give them their access for fire protection breach bill before going in. So that that's not an issue. It's it's the domestic water usage.
Does anyone else have any questions, Bill?
Thank you for, thank you for a very informative presentation. I think I'm starting to understand more than I did when I came to the board. My question has to do with the longer range view of things. I imagine your engineers will come out squeezing a few more drops out of the system here and there. And we can throw projects off the system here and there. But has there been an effort between the planning board and call it the master planning exercise? To work around this bottleneck and you you've got a lock on growth, basically. Uh, until something big changes, it seems. Does that discussion even occur or or the master plan just sort of assumed that somebody will come up with a part of it?
I don't, should I?
Go ahead, yeah, yeah.
So I mean, I think, Phil, it's a recent, it's only two months, um, and so I think that those conversations do have to happen. Um, once we have. Some more data behind the the engineering that the precinct receives.
Yep.
To understand, you know, what that does mean long term. Um, you know, there's, there's a balance between, obviously, everyone knows the housing crisis that is. Surrounding us everywhere and wanting to make sure that we are not. Pushing development to sensitive areas outside of the the core of the town. Um, which is a a key component of the master plan as far as natural resource protection. And um, you know, other outside of just the housing section. Um, so I think they are conversations. It is a process that once we have the data for what potential capacity that looks like that we have to have.
Yeah, I I don't know that there's a silver bullet for it and I'm I'm not going to speculate that there is until we get that attention back.
Thank you, Adam. Could you just brought up something that I don't understand? Is this a two-year-old knowledge base or is this thirty-year-old knowledge base? You've known the capacity in the systems since you put it in.
Yep.
And hasn't changed much, just dropped a little. So that it's not new, this isn't in two years, all of a sudden we figured this out, been there right along.
But the demand hasn't been there all.
I don't know, but in terms of a master planning exercise or where the growth in town is, that's been known for thirty years. Sure, sure.
Well. Yes, yes, but. As I said earlier, you know, if you're going to make changes. In the zoning that affect the water pot. How are you playing for that? You know, you're already in the game and the goalpost to change it, and I'm not pointing fingers at you, I'm just telling you, that's what we see is that the precinct is going to grow from the inside out. And I'm not sure we're in a position to deal with that, certainly not in a position right now. You know, I get the housing shortage thing, it's everywhere. And uh, it's applicable, the town's addressing it. And we'll be monitoring it as much as we can, but. Can't do what I don't have.
And. I mean, I I think it is fair that we didn't, the precinct or the planning board have. The knowledge of how soon this was going to come. I mean, none of these projects come online.
Yep.
It's the existing customer capacity that it's, these issues being met over the last two or three years of the data.
The hospital projects changed five times in five years.
Right, but you know, but it's not online yet. And so I think that, you know, though we do obviously know what the usage has been, what we do in through the master plan process, we met with Kenny, Kenny gave the committee presentation. And they're explaining how the water conservation measures have really sort of stopped the increase of usage over time. And if we're up in two hundred and fifty thousand gallons a day back in twenty eighteen when we came to talk to us and. Um, and my understanding at that point was we had about half a million gallons a day usage. Um, and so we we did have those conversations, but I think that, you know, whether it's practice of of user or the. How much the wells are falling out, things have changed um, in that time period. And so, you know, we do have to adjust for more data now.
Yeah, to be fair to the state, the state looks at, they don't care where the water's going, they don't care what that water number is. And if that maximum flow approaches what the capacity of the system is. That's not a good thing for us. They've made it very clear that that's not a good thing. So uh. Having a sixty-unit development doesn't help that situation. So I don't have a gradient right now.
And I mean, as example of what Twin Pines has proposed, there may be alternative water sources that still allow for those developments to occur to meet the capacity that don't require. Putting up to the system. That's relatively neat project that's forty acres and a substantial portion is not being used. So they have, you know, the ability to have wellheads and any things.
Yeah, wellhead protection area, it's probably public water supply and continuing doesn't have that luxury. Right. Unless they give up using some of the land, right? Use it for water.
Okay, um, Joe.
Hey, thanks again. I mean, you you have an eye extremely helpful. This is really helped by learning, trying each time I listen to it. Um, I'm sure I can find it. You can tell me directly online about the precinct, the perimeters of the precinct. Um, when was that set? Has it always been a a certain geographic area? And and just roughly whereabouts is that, Joe?
So nineteen twenty-five is when the precinct was formed and. It was done through. On a voluntary basis, there was some vision that the town center needed municipal water. And if you look, if you come down the precinct, that's the easiest way to see it. I've, Robbie showed you a walk, pictures worth a thousand words. It makes no sense. You'd think it would be a block, but it's all over the place. Its fingers have run out and you have to think back nineteen twenty-five, what it looked like. Pretty much an agrarian community, large tracts of land. John Doe wanted to be in the precinct. John Smith didn't want to be. And so that's how you have these big convoluted changes that go around. And in in the in the fifties, they did what was called a recall, I guess they they said in eight. There were some properties that were added in that I think helped with some of the future smaller subdivisions that we see around town. That were required. So it has not changed since the twenties. Other than a couple little jigs and jogs and it's fairly built up. Throughout the entire precinct. If you look at it, it's on a grid map, so you can see where all the all the mains are, you can see where all the roads are, you can see where the subdivisions are. Fifteen years ago, when the Kelsey Fields. Fifteen years ago.
Yeah.
Uh, we had to deal with the situation, college indicated that those fields, that land, which was Cleveland land, was in the precinct. And we didn't think of it. So we had Doug Sweet do a boundary survey of. Kind of like a perambulation of the precinct on the extremities of it, determine whether that land was thirty-five thousand dollars. Prove that that wasn't in the precinct, because that's a big chunk of land and that could have had a dramatic impact. You know, even though I heard it was going to be just a field. Probably forty years from now, it's going to be just a field. And so the college did put in a well and I don't know the quality of it. I think it has a couple of issues. But it's a high production well with the use of irrigation. And um, come by the precinct, I'm sure it's hanging around on the wall behind the water, you can see where it goes. But I I guess briefly it runs, if we start at the precinct. It includes all of Twinlingle. So that's the Springfield section and all Twinlingle Village West, about thirty-five custom yourself. And then it runs out through the bucket land, so part of Old County Road. Comes across Siemens Acres. So this side of Littlefield's house, Littlefields isn't in, this side of it is. And then it runs down to where it jogs back by your house, back in. And that last hydrant right there on Siemens Road is the end of it. And it, it it's, does some of the land, doesn't go down. The side of Susan's swamp on Siemens Road. But it runs out, it hits the Cleveland's and comes down to the Four Corners. And then it runs out to past, just past Park's house where Stagecoach Road is. And then it comes back hard and never touches Rawlhill, goes back and picks up Trussel Hill. Comes down over by Mass Park, comes out roadway down where this side of where Rick Green lives on on County Road. And then it does a section of Columbus Ave, runs down towards Herr Coe a little bit, and then all of Burby Hill. And then it comes back up around. Down to Newport Road, Newport Road. And then back up towards the post office. And it slabs down, picks up Great Pines. And out towards Camp Sunday used to be, it's not anymore. Then it comes across and that's the end of it. It's, it's not a, not a rubber stamp. You see it on the map, it will make assets.
Joe. One last, one last question.
Hang on, Joe. Adam has.
I was just saying, Cara has been working on the database of precinct properties to add to the GIS system that we have. So we've sent the database to the Regional Planning Commission. They're building the GIS layer. Then we'll send it to the assessors so that it can be overlaid over our zoning map, the sewer lines. So that we have it as a planning tool.
Be great.
Hopefully within the next month to six weeks.
Maybe two months.
Two months.
So the, the engineering, we won't call it the big dig yet, but we're going to call it the big dig when it gets there, right on Main Street. That's all that has to come up. Just dealing in that area with, with this engineering, all these little figures that go different places. Those are all, all in good shape. We're good.
No, we're okay though. You know, South Pleasant Street's been done. That was done fifteen, eighteen years ago. Pine Hill's been redone, that jog up through the woods and Pine Hill Road itself. And there's been some upgrades that have been taken care of. Roundabout did a bunch of it. We ended up doing all the way to Masser Corner. Down to the, next to Ubert's. And the hospital brought it down to Jimmy's Vine. And if anyone goes in, they're going to have to bring it around to improve what comes out of the oxide and back up to Jimmy's Vine. So, you know, most of those other water mains are not big transmission. County Road. That's a six-inch main once it leaves Park, actually Jimmy's Vine, it's six-inch there all the way out to Pot and Itil. Itil's been upgraded, a bunch of that's been upgraded to eight-inch. A lot of that stuff's been changed over time. Main Street Trump, which is the major championship. And you know, I think there's sections that run back towards Buckland Beach that haven't been changed. Three old. But we don't have any problem. We're addressing Main Street because of all the water mains. Those other ones, we won't get out of any water. Everything we get is on Main Street. Not a great place for it, but that's who we are.
Thank you, Kim. Peter Nichols, chairman of the Housing Commission. We chatted at the tenants' meeting. So I first want to say thank you. Great presentation. I learned an awful lot in the last couple of months attending your meetings and doing homework. Understanding what the letters are from the state, et cetera. And first of all, I want to say that the math is correct. In two more or three more years, you'll have your centennial anniversary. So I I think that's pretty amazing. You've operated a public utility for a hundred years and you and your commissioners and staff are to be applauded. That's really substantial. That being said, your, your service, your utility is critical to the growth of our community. However, however it's approved by with planning and the selectmen and the citizens voting and moving forward as the community evolves. So as said earlier, that it's a, it's a lock on the growth. It really is the, the gatekeeper of of what could be done as far as healthy growth in our town. And we've talked about that. It may seem like a nuance, but you had suggested that, that your water is a finite resource. And clearly it is, it is a finite resources, resource. But I would urge the perspective of saying it's not, we might not come up with water. We might just say we don't have any good options. But more to look at it to say, what are the costs of the options we have? We have to come up with more water. You can make drinkable water out of seawater, but it's very expensive. So I would urge that, that change in perspective of not to say it's a finite resource and we might come up with no good options. But what options are there at whatever cost it may take so they could be understood? That, that might be very productive. We will continue, we, the Housing Commission, will continue to work on ways that housing can be provided in this town, which is so badly needed. And the voters have echoed that to us over and over. But, and, and in fact, density will increase. In some modest form or another, it has to. We, we have to figure out the best way to do that. So I wouldn't suggest that you plan on no further increase in density. But what are the options and what is going to cost? We need to find, we must find some good options.
Okay. Thank you. This has been very informative and I, I think it answers a lot of questions for people in the community. So I really appreciate you all coming.
If anyone has questions, just message precinct office. I'll be back again. I don't have a cell phone. My phone in the house. Do I go back for a kill now?
You can go back. Thanks.
All right, thank you.
Does anyone have any public comments? Not on the agenda tonight? Want to talk about anything that's not on our agenda? Okay. With regard to old business, I have contacted a representative of Kempel Power. And it does not appear that taking our paper, they would accept our paper as a field source that was brought up at one of our previous meetings. So I just wanted to mention that we did follow up on this. With new business. With regard to the Citizens Advisory Committee, Linda Sargent has been, has asked to be on that. And do I have a motion to accept her?
Motion to accept the second on the Citizens.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right. We need to review the proposal from MRI regarding the wage survey and classification study. And I believe that that is the only company that responded to the RFP. Ken, would you like to address that?
Yep. Okay, so the RFP was sent to two consultants that are known to have conducted similar surveys in New Hampshire with success. Those two consultants are MRI of Plymouth, New Hampshire, and Condrey Associates of Athens, Georgia. The consultant that did the twenty sixteen survey, Thornton Associates of Scarborough, Maine, is no longer doing these surveys. Condrey and Associates informed me that they would not be submitting a proposal. MRI did submit a proposal that you will consider tonight. MRI's proposal is for fifteen thousand five hundred. And you'll probably recall that we have budgeted fifteen thousand for the project. MRI is a highly respected organization with expertise in all facets of local government operations. They have extensive experience in doing wage and compensation studies. The proposed project manager, Carol Grantfield, is well-known to municipal officials and will likely have a lot of success in getting the necessary data from municipalities she conducts for the information, which would be good for our study. I believe that MRI will provide a final report that will include the information needed to establish a wage and compensation plan that will be fair and equitable and that will be able to be updated as needed in the future. So based on that, I recommend that you accept MRI's proposal so we can start this process now. So that we have the information at the start of the fiscal year twenty twenty-five budget cycle.
Okay, don't you have any questions?
Sure. The proposal looks to me to be a very solid one. Kim and MRI has a great reputation. So if you didn't get multiple responses, doesn't bother, bother me at all. Reading through it, the one thing that I saw where you might have some input has to do with what comparable towns might be to be looked at. And so I've provided you with, and my colleagues here, with a list of suggested towns that relate either to geography or to similar types of activities such as small residents or hospitals or colleges. Hope that push you to give it to, to them.
We can certainly pass that on.
Yep. Maybe.
Yeah.
That was the list, yeah.
No, I was going to ask the same kind of question. And if they're looking at the list that's done, the survey was done in two thousand sixteen as well.
Yes, they've looked at that as well. Hopefully they'll, I mean, they'll come up with their own own towns. They'll share them with us. And I expect that they will use some towns for some departments and other towns for other departments. Is generally, it's, it wouldn't be likely that they could find eight to twelve towns that are exactly like ours for all departments.
Okay, do I have a motion to accept a proposal from Municipal Resources for the Wage Survey and Classification Study? So moved. Sorry. All those in favor? Ken, you want to give us your administrative report?
Right. I'm happy to report that we have approval from the state of New Hampshire to put the speed feedback signs. How do you say it? Speed feedback signs? Driver feedback signs? The signs that tell you you're going too fast on Little Sonnily Road around Buckland Beach. We have had to get state approval for those because that's a state road. And we also have the signs for Bunker Road. And so those will be going in as soon as staff can get the time to put them up. So we should be getting some good feedback from those signs soon. I'm sure the residents in those areas that donated the money to the town of New London to purchase those signs will be very happy to see them go up.
And you sent the letter to the state asking, requesting a forty-five mile?
No, you need to sign that. So.
Oh, okay.
That's all I have.
The committee reports, the three of us went to the Sonnily wastewater treatment meeting the other night. And one of the questions we asked was how, at what capacity is the, is the plant? Is it, how much capacity does it have left? And apparently there's only half of the really water precinct or the sewer precinct that is using only half capacity. So we feel that any growth with regard to sewer usage will not be a problem for the town of New London or Sonnily. Any other names?
Jen, I was just going to say, because of the discussion of water precinct, the difference is with the Sonnily and the London sewer system, the three of us are the sewer commissioners. So unlike the situation with the Water Department, where it was independent board a number of years ago, the sewer commission in the London was disbanded and those selected became the sewer commissioners. In Sonnily, they have a separate sewer and water commission that handles both the water and the sewer that we're talking about. So the reason that Janet mentioned us meeting with them is that quarterly, we do meet with the Sonnily sewer commissioners, talk about things like capacity and so on, and the quality of the effluent that's coming out. That's the difference between sewer, water, and the body.
Any other meetings that? Well, well, okay. With regard to priorities, capital reserve funds, Bill, were you going to start that?
So as at least the members of the Budget Committee here know, we've had a lot of discussion about our capital reserve funds or let's or I think we should start calling them just reserve funds. And so what we're initiating tonight is sort of what I hopefully a five-step process to do a little bit deeper study of what's going on with our, our reserve funds. And tonight, we're simply dealing with a review of some facts and creating a timeline as a minute. Kim and Lynn will take care, will take us through some of the facts at this point. And then I would suggest that in our next meeting, just before the Budget Committee has its organization meeting, then we will invite the Budget Committee to a workshop in, in June to talk about the reserve funds. And then throughout the budget process, this fall and winter, we will be dealing with reserve funds just as we always do to see where, where the, what we understand about them now, how it comes into play. And then finally, if there's things we want to change, most of the things that have changed have to go to the town meeting. So we would then create in January, order articles if necessary to deal with that. It's a rather more complicated process than simply something we just like to deal with. We also see Joe, Joe Cuban in the back. We also deal with the trustees of trust funds. Responsible for, we're seeing the expenditure of all of those funds. So with that, Kim, Lynn, I'll turn it over to you.
Okay, so I thought we would go alphabetically. I'll name the fund and tell you what the purpose is. And then you guys can discuss or ask questions. Okay, first up, bridge maintenance. And the purpose of that, as the title suggests, is bridge repair and maintenance. Do you want me to keep going through it, Bill? Or do you want to have comments of anything or amounts of money or Lynn could give ballpark figures if you need it. Some funds, I mean, we haven't put money in for twenty twenty-four yet, obviously, because that starts in July.
Kim, one of the things everybody may not know is in some cases, only the town meeting can appropriate funds out of a reserve fund. Other cases, or a selectman or agents to do that.
Mentioned that, okay. The Bridge Maintenance Fund needs selectmen, our agents to expend. So the selectmen could spend money out of that fund without a vote at town meeting, but only for purposes of bridge maintenance. Next one. Next, we have the General Cemetery Maintenance Fund. And again, that sounds like the title. It's to the purpose of general cemetery maintenance. The selectmen are not agents to expend for that one. Communications equipment.
Can I, does that, that means that only agents that can lead to any maintenance of the cemetery?
You can only, at a town meeting or a special town meeting, can you appropriate money out of it?
Because there's a, for, I just maybe might want to take a look and say, it's sort of funny that we have all these others that selectmen can spend funds from, score some bucks for the cemetery.
Do you have a balance on that one? Hundred and twenty thousand, hundred and twenty-six, forty-four, thirty, as of the year of twenty twenty-three. So at the end of this year.
Okay, next up, we have communications equipment. The selectmen are agents to expend that. And that is communication. When I say that, I mean dispatch and equipment. Next up, we have the Computer Maintenance Capital Reserve Fund. The selectmen are agents to expend that fund. And that is for computer maintenance and replacement. Next up, Conservation Commission, the Conservation Commission Land Acquisition Fund. DPW Building. That is wording on that one. Do you have that one? I'm missing that one. Okay, so that's the Public Works Buildings Repair and Maintenance.
So again, I would interrupt and say, as we go through here, you'll see that most of the buildings in town, we have the, selectmen have the ability to disperse funds during the course of the year. But for some reason, we can't do it for the DPW buildings.
Well.
Curious historical.
Right, I think agents to expend. I think early on, capital reserve funds that were established early on, a lot of times weren't, they were not agents to expend. And so then when the law allowed them, towns.
What I'm suggesting for the budget here, for the town people who aren't interested, is that when we have this we can do maintenance in some places, not cemeteries, you do the library, but we can't do strange pics. Probably want to correct one. That would be takes to January and warrant articles. Because we can't do any of that without a town meeting.
Next up, we have Energy Conservation Fund. And that was for the purpose of energy conservation improvements. Selectmen are agents to expend that one. Fire breathing apparatus. Everybody knows what fire breathing apparatus is?
Right.
Dragons.
Those, those would be our S D B A. We've got twenty-four air packs that we use on our apparatus for our fire trucks.
We next have.
Why would I say that?
Next up, we have fire department radios. Radios that the fire department uses. Fire vehicle funds. Selectmen are agents to expend that.
Now the curiosity, we can extend money for a million-dollar firing for a radio.
GIS update. The selectmen are agents to expend that. And that project, I want to say was done, completed some time ago. There's actually zero in that fund. We could officially close it if we wanted. No, there's no money left into it because the project was completed ten years ago, maybe. No, maybe not that long at all. Maybe five. Or left open in the event we ever want to put money into the GIS fund if we ever wanted to update. Next up, gravel roads. And the purpose of that is to pay Um, and the purpose of that is to pave gravel roads. The selectmen are agents to expend that one. But even though the selectmen are agents to expense, we do, we can bring those questions to town meeting, just because the selectmen are agents to expend doesn't mean that that's the only way the money can be spent. It often, many of these do go to town meeting, so voters have the opportunity to say whether or not they want to pave something or any other thing we have, buy a fire truck, for example. Okay. Next up, Highway Department, Highway Equipment, the selectmen are agents to expend that, and that is for Highway Department Heavy Equipment. Next up, Library Building Maintenance, the selectmen are agents to expend that fund. Master Plan Update, big project that we do every five to eight years, ten years, um, it's a fairly costly endeavor, and many towns have, um, capital reserve funds for that, the selectmen are agents to expend that fund. The Municipal Regional Transportation Fund, that's the fund where when people register their cars, that's five dollars per registration that goes into that fund. Uh, just this year, the selectmen became agents to expend that fund. Um, and the purpose of that, um, is for improvements in the local or regional transportation system, including roads, bridges, bicycle and pedestrian facilities, parking and intermodal facilities, electric vehicle charging stations and public transportation. Police Equipment, that is for the purpose, purpose of purchase of equipment for use of the police department. The selectmen are agents to expend that fund. A new fund we have is the Records Management, uh, System Capital Reserve Fund, the selectmen are agents to expend that fund as well. Recreation Facilities, selectmen are agents to expend that, uh, and that, to allow the fund to be used for improvements to existing town owned facilities for the Recreation Department.
So Kim, that's such a features.
Currently, um.
Right now.
Recreational, I suppose, any, any areas that we use for recreational, I suppose you could use them on conservation trails if we wanted to put, um, some recreational things there, improvements there. I guess since it says existing, that would make me think I'd go back to two thousand and four to see what existing properties the town had, it's kind of weird that they actually put existing in it, so.
It's just that they want.
Yep. Okay, we have the Sewer Department. Um, those, that, those funds are to be, uh, used for sewer improvements. Sidewalks. You know what that is for, sidewalks, building new ones and, uh, updating the ones we have.
Okay, that comment of discussion of water histories tells me that we're probably two years away from the Main Street sidewalks at least.
Town Building Improvement Fund, the selectmen are agents to expend that fund. Town Vehicles and Equipment Repair Capital Reserve Funds, selectmen are agents to expend that fund. Transfer Station, uh, Improvements, the purpose of that is for improvements to the transfer station and recycling center. That's the end of our list.
Anybody, maybe, Bill, do you have any questions? Anyone?
Your cardiologist, a quick question, the last one, you mentioned what's the balance, do you know what for the transfer? And our selectmen's agents, we spend that one, you're not.
And the balance, uh, forty-five thousand.
Yeah. Peter, Peter's got a question.
Sorry. Quick question, uh, there are some dams in streams and rivers in the place within the community, um, are those included in the bridge repair or are they responsibility of the town?
Well, which, we only have one dam. Bridges, we have quite a few bridges, like say, um, culverts, large culverts are considered bridges for purposes of this fund, so which ones are you talking about, Peter?
Any of them, just they're, they're in some communities and states, there's liability for the towns or regions that are failing or need repair, they're expensive to do. So just out of curiosity, uh, for example, Pleasant Lake has a dam, if it needs to be repaired, is that a town response?
Oh, yeah, that, the Pleasant Lake Dam is owned by the town of New London and five, eight years ago, um, several thousands of dollars were spent on it, so it's completely up to state standards and it's good.
Right, right, are there any others?
Any other dams, we, the town owns another dam, the Hayes Dam, is that name it, in Elkins?
Also a dam.
But that's not owned by the town, no, no.
The Hayes Dam isn't owned.
We can look it up. We can check them out. Yeah, so the, the dam is definitely, but you know, a lot of people don't think we have bridges, I mean, we have a couple that actually look like bridges, but large culverts. What's that road, not West Side Drive, um. Where the Tresal Ridge, what is that road, um? Brookside Drive, thanks, Bob, perfect, yes, we had two very expensive culvert replacements, more than two hundred thousand dollars for each, and those were on the state's red list bridges, although they were culvert, so.
Yeah, and we also, I did the one on Pingree, we had replaced the culvert and the bridge, well, it was a bridge, right, in Pingree, and what about the one in, um?
Otterville?
Near Otterville, yeah. That one.
That one actually looks like a bridge.
Yeah. So those have all been actually.
We're up to, we're in very good shape.
Recent, recent years, yeah.
So thanks, Kim, we're off, right now, and the next discussion will be on the twenty-fourth, when we, uh, this is for the Budget Committee meeting, we'll try to set a date to have a workshop.
Like, so is there any other information on these funds that you'd like for that meeting or just balances?
Yeah, balances. Okay, um, also under priorities, we, you said that we would talk about the police station, um, at each meeting, and I recommend that we hire a firm to create an informational video with narration by Chief Cobb of the police station. Then when we hold meetings with the public regarding the police station, we can show the video. So that will let the select board know if the residents of New London feel that it's necessary to obtain a site for a new police station. So I would ask that Kim find, um, some companies that do that sort of thing. Yeah.
Is there any, is there any update on, uh, if we can, if we're gonna be able to schedule a time to go look at the, um?
Well. Do you have a contact that we?
I sent a phone number to Kim.
Yeah, I tried the number, I think we're gonna look at a different way to contact the person.
Yeah, yeah, I said a few ideas and suggestions.
All right, so we still plan to do that.
Okay, okay.
Thank you. Um. So with regard to meeting minutes, do I have a motion to approve the minutes of April six? Oh, I'm sorry, Emily.
I know, I don't look like I normally look like, I apologize for, um, they offer my very casual attire, but I was in Police Academy all day as an actor in scenarios to the recruits, including our own recruits, so please forgive my very casual.
But you still are.
Yes, it feels it's wrong to be before you and walk into the Police Academy jeans. Um, if I could just be involved in any of those covers.
Oh, of course, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, so do I have a motion to accept the minutes of April sixth?
Do we have?
Yeah. Yeah, we do, we do have them.
Well, you guys don't get paper copies anymore.
Yeah, they were online. You didn't want copies, remember?
Right, and I didn't see them.
Oh, April twenty-seventh was my mom, but, uh.
I apologize.
We'll ship them, I'll, I'll send it over to you.
I guess the only question you can tell us from there.
Yeah.
I don't go looking for.
Right.
Okay.
I will look.
But since I asked for a hard copy, I got it.
Confusing here.
Okay, all right, um, so we won't do that, and, uh, the only other business, um, since, uh, BB is not going to be here for the, uh, twenty-fourth meeting with the Budget Committee, uh, we need an alternate billeroy to, um, go to that Budget Committee and have voting.
I was usually hoping it could happen, get it to be the ultimate from the Budget Committee.
That's why I was second. Second. All those in favor? And the other, other.
And I won't miss another one, I promise.
Okay, that would be good. Um, and then we've had a request to use the town common, uh, for, it's called the Honor Bear Project, and it is, um, they, they will put a number of flags on the common in September. Doesn't necessarily have to be like that, but, um, they want to put them on the common for about thirty days, so, um, are you all in favor of doing this?
Having looked at those pictures, I would say about the concept, I think they need to understand what the limitations are.
Right.
Use of the grid.
Yeah.
For that long period of time.
I think if we, um, ask them to consolidate them and put them, uh, probably near the, uh, police station rather than near the, uh, bandstand, I think that would be, uh, what they're going to do. So do I have a motion to approve use of the town common for the Honor Bear Project? So, all those in favor?
Aye.
I know, so now we just have the, um, approval of pay vouchers.
Yeah, can you just put it in here? That way everybody will sign it, okay.
Do we have to sign it?
Yeah.